This is my last meeting. My pain and suffering, my bursitis and arthritis is so great, I can hardly stand it, definitely not for two, two and a half hours behind the camera. So, and you were correct in the things you mentioned about me. I do, I have done in, well, the city council for about 18 years. County commission, child school board meetings, all the veterans events, scouting events, strawberry festival stuff, all, everything except the main feature parade that belongs to Channel 5. I have hosted or co-hosted until I lost my co-host. He's sitting right there in the mayor's seat. For the anti-car parade. I do all this, and the car shows too, I do car shows. I did. All this stuff that I do is free to the community through Channel 3. I haven't been paid in 12 years. I don't want to get paid. This is my contribution to the community. I am a service-connected disabled veteran. And my V8 disability check comes out of your taxes. I want to make sure you do get your money's worth out of me. Having said that, I have run into a predicament in the community and in my personal life about that. City council recently wanted to vote themselves a pay raise according to the paper. And I defended city council publicly and said they are not giving themselves a pay raise, they are giving a pay raise to the next city council. It's against the law for them to give themselves a pay raise. And I got comments back like, "They're a burden on the taxpayer. They don't deserve it. They should do it all for free." Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's the same attitude I get from some people calling me a burden on the taxpayer because of my V8 disability check. Okay? And that really annoys me. And I'll tell you who the biggest culprit is, and it's nobody in this community. The biggest culprit is my own one and only sister. Lives in upstate Michigan near Traverse City. She refuses to call me anything different. So, keep in mind that there's an attitude out there that's anti-city council for pay raises and things like that, as well as anti-veteran. And I think I've said enough.
Thank you, Mr. Quarters. Again, thank you for all the work you've done in the community. We appreciate it, and I know you're going to be...
I wish I could do more, but the lakes just won't allow it in the back.
I'm sure you'll find a way to help us out. I know you're...
Yeah, I'm working the studio two or three nights a week. That's a sick job, John.
Well, you stood up long enough. Good job. Under-recognized guest, we're getting on with our agenda. I'm very proud to ask Jeff St. Clair to come forward regarding Pauline St. Clair Funeral Home. Jeff, sir, you have the floor.
Right here.
Yes, sir.
I've got with me my son-in-law Cody Cabrera, Don Collins from Matthews International Cremation, and we're seeking approval to install a cremation unit in the existing connected garage on the funeral home. And Mr. Collins will answer any questions pertaining to cremation of the unit.
Okay. Now, before we begin there, now, we don't, we're not making any decisions tonight because I'm not seeing anything on the agenda and be as far as any discussion, or just discussion, introduction of the subject for us to take into consideration. Would that require, we'll talk to Vince here in a minute on how that would work. Thank you very much, Jeff. So, just for clarification's sake, Pauline St. Clair would like to install a crematorium in the back, in their barn, bucket garage.
A cremation unit in the connected garage to the funeral home.
All right. Now, council, we'll open the floor to you for any questions or comments. David?
I got a couple questions.
Go ahead.
Hi, Jeff, how are you doing?
Okay, Dave.
What is the proportion? I know there's a lot more people that get cremated now than compared to X amount of years ago. What's the percentage that...
We're doing about 25% right now.
And has that increased pretty dramatically over the last 10, 20 years?
Uh, we went from about 13, 14% and then it jumped to 25, and it's kind of holding steady there. But we anticipate it going further. And we want to have our own crematorium so we're not dependent on others, someone else.
So, what's the closest place now to you?
There's one in Jane Lou and there's one in Valley Bend.
Do you get any pushback from people within a community for a crematorium?
What do you mean, a pushback?
Well, do they not want to have one? They prefer not to have one in the city limits or...
I've not heard any pushback.
I will add to that. Talk about pushback, once this came to my attention, I did do some research and, given the technology that's involved now in modernized cremation, is there another word besides a crematorium?
Cremation unit, rector.
Cremation unit, okay.
They call it cremation unit.
I did a lot of research, and now that you would not even realize the fact that that was actually taking place, and the other issues, let me ask this question. Is there an additional charge at this point from Pauline St. Clair to have a cremation at another facility? Would that in any way...
The price wouldn't change.
Wouldn't? Okay.
No.
Oh, okay.
It's just that we wouldn't be paying another funeral home to do that.
To do that?
Yeah.
So, you don't add an extra charge?
We'll use that money to help offset the cost and eventually pay for it.
That's it, that's what I wanted to know. Other question, Barry?
And, and of course, in the business that you're in, this would shorten maybe the time?
Right.
Okay, so...
And we wouldn't have to transport them somewhere else.
Right.
Everything would be done on-site.
Yeah, and sometimes families have to wait when they...
Right.
Okay. And I think that's a great idea. And it'll enhance your business and...
Thank you, Mary. Robin?
I can understand why you want to do this. I think that there will be more and more cremations as time goes forward, and I see no problem with it.
Thank you, Robin. Mr. Pugh?
Although I would talk to Jeff on Sunday in church.
Yeah. Jeff, and just for clarification's sake, now, anybody that's living within the neighborhood, you're not going to notice any change because the facility that you're going to be using here, the garage net floor, is not going to change from what it looks like now.
Right.
So, it's going to look the same. And from what I understand, any of the, let's say, the person that will be, will be placed into the crematorium, they won't be wheeled about, you won't, not going to see anything. It goes from underneath your building into the...
Right.
So, there's no, nothing new is going to change.
All the contained inside the funeral home and the garage.
You would not even know the fact that it's there.
Right.
What's the temperature that you...
Oh, for heaven's sakes, Dave.
The temperature is 1400 to 1600 degrees.
Wow.
It takes approximately two hours to cremate a body. And the machine actually has an opacity system that's designed to monitor any of the emissions as far as smoke and all, and is proactively looking for any changes to make corrections ahead of time. The machine weighs 28,000 pounds. It's over 15 foot in total length, that's your clearances and all. And it's a state-of-the-art piece of equipment. Matthews has been building cremation units for over 60 years. I myself have owned, operated funeral homes, I had funeral homes and cremation units in South Carolina near Myrtle Beach, and my neighbors lived all around me and never said a word. Most crematories today are in funeral homes because it does allow people to keep, the funeral homes, to keep their loved ones for the families in-house, and that way they're taking care of their loved ones from start to finish. They never leave their care. As of right now, you have to transport out, bring back, and so it is a big relief to a lot of the families to do that. It's, the machine is regulated by the state. It takes about 45 days to get the permit back from the state before we can even construct the unit. Our machines are approved all over the United States. We have over 4,500 cremation units in the United States, and we're shipping about 150 a year now. So, Matthews has been around a long time, been doing them a long time. The machine's built 60 years ago, we're still in operation, a lot of them are. And so, I'm very proud of the company and what it represents and how it is with the communities.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Go ahead, Robin.
But that's a considerable amount of heat, but is there, is there any other benefit they have in that? Can you do anything with that heat other than just cremate somebody, or can it be recycled into usable...
If you don't feel...
Actually, the machine after a full day of operation, if he was to cremate one body after another, you can still place your hands on the outside of it.
Is that right?
It's that cool. But we are studying right now as far as high-volume locations, taking the heat off the stack and turning it in through expanders, take generators, make electricity. That's something that's coming up for the future.
I was wondering if you're alternative type of heating or anything.
It'd be nice to save that for the winter if you're on.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah.
Jeff, I got, and I really want to add this for the community's sake as well. How long has Pauline St. Clair been in business, established in the city of...
That location since 1947.
1947.
Yeah.
And all of the families, and mine included, that you have serviced, you do a great service and your funeral home does, and I'm not downgrading anybody, any other funeral homes, but your funeral home does a fantastic job with the family and handles the services and the situation as much, as professionally as I've ever seen before.
Thank you.
And I know that all the work that this business has done within the community is highly respected and that you would not consider such a thing unless you were totally 100% convinced and can convince us that, and this is what they did, there's no real issue with this, it's just a stigma of what we're talking about. I do want to make sure that the committee understands that as well, and you have my full support on this.
Jeff is the last one to let you down.
Yeah. Okay, I didn't need to go there. I am going to ask Mitt Smith, our zoning officer, do we have anything within our ordinances or within state code prohibiting the fact that a crematorium or a facility like this cannot be placed within the city of Buchanan's limits?
We do not know, and the state recognizes the funeral home and the crematory as one entity as well. So, my question was, what, how is it, what's the diameter of the stack that's vented out?
The stack is 29 inches round.
So, it is a large stack?
It is. It's 49, it's a 45-inch hole cut for the stack to penetrate, stack is lined, and that's the air gap around it to keep from having any fires or anything like that, keep them drying out wood and materials.
Okay, is it an open stack, or is there a grate, or is there a cap on it? What's the...
Uh, the hole is open because it re-strengthens the refactory in the bottom of that unit. If it rains, it evaporates out. It maintains it and makes it stronger. So, you do not put a cap over it. The EPA will not allow you to take it to that. Years ago, they used to put what they call a china cap on it.
Right.
And they're not allowed in more than none of the states because they want to have everything to be able to escape through the secondary chambers like it's supposed to.
Okay. With, your emissions from that, I'm sure, what do you see?
Smoke, a heat wave, you know what I'm...
No white smoke?
No.
Black smoke?
No. If he was to do a body bag, for instance, with a body that was maybe pretty bad off, if he did that, first case of the day, you may see a little bit of white smoke for just about, I think it's five seconds.
Puff.
It's a puff. That's it. It's just smoke from the unit itself. The emissions with our unit is so minute that the EPA has recognized our equipment all over the United States, and we're approved in every state in the country.
Okay. I mean, that was, that was my concern was, you know, with the neighbors around, what kind of emissions we were going to have?
And, you know, we were talking today about the stack because the stack does go out, it looks like a regular chimney if you put sod around it.
Right.
And you can do that as well. You can dress them up, or you can have them, you don't see them, they're stainless. So, it's just going to be...
So, it's going to come out of the center of your garage, I assume?
Not out the center because of the location of the building that's already there, the funeral home. It has to be, we figured it today, if he goes to the far left side of the garage, and that gives him plenty of room, and he shouldn't have any downdrafts or anything. He won't have any.
So, it will go through the roof?
It will.
Not, not through the outside and see...
It's going to go through the roof.
So, how much above the roof will you see?
Three, he has to be three foot above the top, the top of that roof.
Okay.
And so, he has to be three foot above, and that's the national requirement.
Right, absolutely. Okay.
Okay.
Good deal.
Let me, just for clarification's sake, now, the council doesn't have to vote on this. This is not, this is a permits concern, and really what we wanted to do, and I know what Jeff is trying to do is, or your intention, I believe, is to educate and let the citizens know that this is what the plan is and that, that there are no concerns that the citizens should have. And we appreciate you bringing that to us before because technically, as I just heard, we could have just permitted it and allowed it to happen, and I believe that that would be the case. But what I would encourage council in is foreseeing, as long as we don't foresee any issues from state code or municipal code that, and I don't know, does council feel like you want to hold off on the permit for one week, or do you feel like, do you think we should give this, here's my question, let's just catch the chase. Do you think we should give the citizens a chance until the next council to come forward with any concerns that they may have with this? Particularly, I'm talking about the neighbors.
What's the length of...
I have friends who live down in Jane Lou, close to where Pat Boyle built his facility, what, a handful of years ago, and everybody was like, "Oh, a crematorium's coming in." They've never noticed any difference except the traffic coming from the people going for the viewings and such. You don't see, like this gentleman said, you don't see anything.
At least he's one of our neighbors, too.
Yeah, and I'm one of the neighbors.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
I know that my mother was cremated, you know, I think it's great. Terry and I plan on being, I think it's, I would be fully in support of it, and I'm probably at some point downwind from them.
How long do you think the process will take, or you're going to have to be permitted? Or should you got to do an application to the state?
It's about, it takes about 45 to 60 days to get that back.
To get that back?
And then we build a machine that takes another 10 to 12 weeks after that. You're probably looking at March or April before we could be ready to construct.
We're building another garage behind 93 South Canal to house our vehicles. So...
In that case, then, we really, as a council, can't, since there's no code or action to it, we can't say no.
Then we'll get along with the business.
What we can do, though, is yes, allow the, go ahead and go for the permit, which I assume you already have. And if there are any citizens or concerns from their neighbors, please give us a call. I feel relatively educated enough to discuss crematoriums. I think, I'm doing, I'm doing too much, okay. Or I'd bet Pauline St. Clair, if there was any questions, if they could call your offices and...
Yeah, I thought they were going to answer, I'll send them all to go on calls.
I want to thank you gentlemen for being here.
Thanks for having us.
Before we move on, I think I saw a couple of heads. Were there any questions from the audience on this? Done?
Yes, folks.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all.
Appreciate everything you hear.
That's what the unit looks like. That machine is five and a half foot wide and almost 15 foot in width.
Thank you, very much.
Yes, ma'am. My old friend.
I had a hydrophone for this, but it's...
Yeah, that's right. Are you going to be in town for a while, Doc?
All right, we'll move on then, our agenda to Department and Board reports. Chief Casey, we have you first, sir.
Good evening. First, I want to remind the public of our annual Christmas parade tomorrow night begins at 6:30. Starts in our parking area, Goodwill Bonds Wendy's, excuse me, and goes up to the courthouse and we come down Main Street, and we end up at the fire station, and Santa Claus will be there as usual to visit the children, begin the parade, begins at 6:30. Lineup is from 5:30 to 6:30, and again, there's no registration, it's pretty informal. Those folks that show up will put them in the parade. Last council meeting, Councilman Pugh asked, there was some conversation here about parking in some narrow streets, and I think at that time the point of contention was pretty much Central Avenue. I gave Ron a break, kind of did some investigation on that street several times, and in closing, Central Avenue is like a lot of other residential streets in this city, cities comparable ours, it's predominantly a lot of narrow streets. Central Avenue, there was never a time that you couldn't get through it. There were lots of times that there was cars parked on both sides, it's very tight. To say that any time you could pull up and park an emergency vehicle in front of each and every home on that street's just not an expectation that can be met. A lot of streets like that, we adjusted that, you know, if we don't get to park in front of your house, we can pull up a little bit, but Central Street was pretty tight. There was one or two days that the fire item on the south side of the street was partially obstructed, but, now, I'm not going to make any parking recommendations, that's, you know, that's way, it's not way out of my field of expertise, but there are some troublesome streets, but Buchanan's a small town, it's something that fire department across the country, every city in America deal with. You folks aren't making the streets any bigger, but fire company manufacturers are making the fire trucks way bigger than they used to be. And I say that jokingly, but it is becoming a problem in America with fire trucks, so they're forced to make them bigger to meet safety standards and keep people on keeping up with increasing size of your streets, so it kind of poses a problem. But in general, there are some problem areas, nothing that we can't address, or it's nothing that I found was a total street closure. I'm sure Councilman Pugh will maybe print that off for you.
Did you give him something in writing?
Yes, he has.
Yes, and if you ask him, I might sell it to you.
This would be...
I've been, I've been sick, and I just, actually just got to finish up printing it off today for him, and so, so that was kind of it in a nutshell. He's got some details. Again, we didn't, didn't find any, there were several streets. Highland Avenue is, Highland, I'm sorry, Highland Drive is another area.
Yes.
If you go up Baldwick, once you get on, you're okay, but there are certain times cars are parked on the corners, and it's very, very difficult to, to make a turn on those streets. Actually, our policy is for that area, we take one of our smaller, smaller fire trucks that carries much stuff, but places we have to do that. Hard Avenue, and our guys are good about knowing that, and Hard Avenue, for example, we all know that on days that they're having sharp services and throughout the week, a couple evenings, they have, you know, to go down South Florida, turn on the Hard Street, and a fire truck can expect to accomplish anything, that just, just doesn't happen. But I guess that's one of the nuances of living in a small town, that's kind of part of the charm, I guess, keeps the fire department on their toes. Back into Central Avenue, I think that was the main point. There may be some stuff there to look at, I'll talk to Jerry a little bit about it. I know some of the residents have concerns about parking. I don't know if you've got enough room to park all the cars on one side of the street or not, but it was tight, but there's, we'll, we can deal with it.
Okay.
Thank you. And that's all I have, if you have any questions. And just want to thank you, it's my last meeting, it's been a pleasure to work here, and I've enjoyed my time.
Oh, this is my last meeting?
Okay. Jerry Arnold, Street and Waste Department.
Good evening. Consolidated Board Report. Consolidated Board met November the 12th. The Board approved a request from the Seventh Day Adventist Church to go door-to-door caroling and like being for the meeting. Also, the Board approved a request from Relay for Life for the use of Joliet Park on July the 16th, 2016, from 6:00 p.m. until midnight for the Relay event. Also canceled the December Consolidated Public Works Board meeting. The next meeting will be January the 28th, 2016. Mayor Edwards stated that he had received several compliments on the flag of the cemetery. I reported on that the materials for the veterans' memorial wall was in, and that we would be installing that after the holidays, hopefully during the next week or so. The Board approved the motion by Mr. Perry to allow free parking downtown from December 21st through December 25th this year during the holiday season. Waste Collection Board met this evening, and the highlight of the waste board, and I know it's just riveting, was reported on, on the deer carcass collection event, which the Solid Waste Authority and Department of Natural Resources, in cooperation with the city of Buchanan, sponsored, set some dumpsters out and did a collection on what would have ended up along the roads, mostly on the, I don't know if you're all familiar with the road that goes between the Hall Road and Children's Run, but a lot of times after the first weekend of your season, if you down to drive down that river road, you see deer carcasses everywhere. So, once again, it was successful. Approximately six ton of material was collected in those dumpsters. They were set at Hodgesville, Alamo, and down on the Hall Road, and then we had one outside our back gated transfer station as well. So, they were used, and once again, it was a successful event. Transfer station tonnage, and again, I'm giving a report for October and November because we did not have a waste board meeting in October. So, transfer station total transactions for October was 2,217, for November, 2034. The total weight was, October 14, 1,414, 25 tons. For November, it was 1,165.23 tons. The grand total receipts was $117,211.64 for October and $97,424.97 for the event. Recycling, October tonnage was 44.65, and for November was 56.51 tons. Street Department report, we expect the delivery of the Luke Unit, the parking unit for the Parking Lot 3 on Monday, and have installation scheduled for Monday. We also, depending on weather, will be completing that section of sidewalk that we had to leave open until the power was on. We've located a bucket truck, as councilmen, as we've been in the search of, a bucket truck for some time, so hopefully we will be acquiring that over the next month. When we can actually look that up, I expect that we'll get a very good feeling on. We are trying to complete the Christmas decorating, and we'll begin work on the local campus and park playground, hopefully by the first week. And that's all I have, Mayor, unless you all have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Any questions or comments for Mr. Arnold?
I don't have a question, but...
A comment, Dave?
I got a comment, yeah. Thanks for doing all of your hard work, Jerry, I appreciate it, your crew. You're going back to the regular schedule now as far as debris pickup and...
Or you are debris gushing.
And same, what is the schedule for recycling?
For recycling?
Yeah.
It's the first and third Tuesday of every month, and again, we start at 5:30 in the morning.
Okay.
If you want yours to assure that your materials picked up, have it out the night before, or about 5:30 in the morning, because the guys have been getting that completed about 9:00 a.m. So, you know, I'm getting, I'm getting a lot of calls, folks not getting it out in time.
And for the debris pickup, you need to call City Hall by what time in the week that the pickup is going to be on Friday?
24 hours. Actually, call by noon on Thursday, so we'll still get you on Friday.
Okay. And your other pickup for the heavy...
Volky goods. Volky goods is the second Friday of every month.
Second Friday.
And again, that's a 20, we need a 24-hour advance notice, so you need to call in here by Wednesday, close the business on Wednesday at City Hall in order to be on the schedule for Friday's pickup.
Is that information on our website?
I believe it is.
Yes.
I believe it is.
I do have one question.
Well, hold on, I'll get the problems done, yeah.
I don't think I started, but that's all right. I just want to compliment the Street Department, whomever you had out there, with the Christmas decorations on the lampposts, those wreaths, or whatever they are around that, they look gorgeous, and it's really nice. And then one question that I want to ask is, when are the lights down East Main Street, the old ones, going to be turned off?
I resubmitted that request from, when I resubmitted the request for the Power Block 3 to the power company. It, along with a, if you remember, council some months ago approved a request from Travis Foster next door here to put a light up on the second pole down, actually on Florida Street there. And that request was faxed September the 9th, and in my discussions, I actually called the 800 number when I turned this pullback. We called the 800 number, they had no record of that, and I had, actually had, Teresa had given me the confirmation by fax, where she would fax it to them. So, it's been resubmitted as to what their schedule is to take the lights down on all, but it's been done twice now.
Can we work out something where they don't charge us for the electricity because we don't want it? I mean, really, that's a good incentive charge, yes.
I think that's a matter of calling the accounts and seeing if we can get that. It's a flat rate, you know, we play, pay a fat, flat rate per light for those lights, so...
They should make an adjustment if we show that they were going to do it.
Yes.
Duplicate effort. We've got the beautiful lights down there, and I think these just detract from, from what they're supposed to be doing. And the other ones are very adequate for the lighting.
They have to take their color gun, nothing's made for you.
Don't suggest that.
Right, Jerry.
We're going to give that, anything else?
No, that's all, thank you.
I think the Christmas decoration looked great, too. I'm real proud of it. When are the lights going to be on at the city park? Where Adam, it's been reported to me that a group of kids are coming down through the back of the park every nighttime, late at night, hanging out in the park, and there's no lights.
I've got two more that I have to get installed, Rob, and again, we're behind primarily because of Lot 3, and then once we got into the Christmas light, I'm still, I'm using the electrician equipment to put up Christmas lights right now. So as soon as that's done, I've got the two lights ordered, as soon as they're in, Travis will go over and get those turned on. So it's in the works.
Okay, well, we've pretty much cleared up the problem at the park, but now it's starting to come back.
I got a call, I got a call actually last week from a neighbor down there that said the net was down, so we went in and took the volleyball net. It had been, one of the wrenching straps had been broken on it, and someone had turned the light on on the main pavilion and left it on. So, yeah, I noticed there are people hanging out down there. Again, of course, too, we had the, the whole week of Thanksgiving was semi-decent weather and had everybody out of school and stuff, so there was more people to call their day than the park.
This is happening late at night, in the morning, early in the morning, the light hours.
Yeah, we'll get you sleep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for placing and then taking them down and purchasing the new ones this year, the city did, for the American flags on Main Street. We, we get a lot of compliments from our visitors and, and friends, and, and it's, it's really nice to see them up there. Of course, our city is beautiful anyhow without the merit of flags, but when their flowers are full and those flags are flying, it's, it's really great. My, my next thing is, is that, you know, the Planning Commission has been tasked by, the Planning Commission's been tasked to look at parking, and we're going to have a couple of working sessions. We have one already, we're having one on the 15th. Don't need you there, but I need some education from you for, I have that meeting, and I was wondering if we could get some sort of map or whatever of where the larks are, Lot 3 and the other one, and how much space it entails and all this kind of stuff, because some of us might know that, but the people that are on the Planning Commission may not know that. And I don't know if that's in our book or not.
Yeah, we can get to that.
Okay. And not everybody needs a copy, is there something, you know, we can look at as we're talking, some working.
What time is that, maybe?
7 o'clock.
I got one of the.
Go ahead.
I wasn't done.
Okay, when you're finished.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay. Jerry, are there, we've talked about speed bumps before, are there what they call speed bumps that you can have out part of the year and then take them up for the winter months for the snow ploughs?
Absolutely.
I've, I've gotten a lot of phone calls recently about the need for speed bumps in some of the areas that, for some reason, people want to just, I know Bogga Street is one of those areas that I've gotten some phone calls on, and I'm sure there's some others, but are they a worthwhile investment for the city to do, do you think?
Ron, again, it's, it's more labor, that's, that's mainly the largest expense I can see with those. Again, they are absolutely no use in the wintertime, especially particularly for us with plowing.
And you take them off, right?
You have to, yes, you would have to remove them. Again, we, we had some installed in some of the alleys, you know, over the years, those temporary ones, and, yeah, they curb speeding quite a bit. But again, you have the labor of installing and picking them up.
What about the speed humps?
Well, the speed humps, absolutely, you can run, we can, with, with the equipment we currently have, we can go into a street, and I'm going to say a bad word, Barber.
Uh huh. Yeah, lovely street.
We could go into, we could go to Barber Street and actually cut out or grind out a two-foot or 30-inch pass and do a speed hump essentially anywhere by just going back in and blacktopping and creating that roll. And you can plow over those.
Yeah. And they're just as effective. Morgantown's got them on every street, I think they've got down there, can't, can't do more than 15 miles an hour.
But yes, Dave, to answer your question, they are available, and yes, we can, I think cost-wise for this, for the speed humps, they're not that expensive, but it's just the labor from someone, and take them out more.
Well, there's some streets I have to go down, but they're getting a lot of people just want to wait to.
What would Law, Fish, Murder Fire Department think about speed humps? Does that?
What's that?
Speed humps, chief, if they were installed, would that deter your response time or anything?
Yeah, not be smart, we just have to slow down. We try to not to drop, inter-residential neighbors, we're not really dropping fast anymore, but we would just, we'd have to slow down and go over them, absolutely. You'd have to slow down our approach, shake your equipment loose and damage your truck's suspension.
Well, it doesn't take much to beat the humps to.
Yeah, you just have to.
Clean out your backseat.
All right. I do have another question for you. Any anticipation on when we can start developing a plan on the AVA Compliance Committee that was formed back in the summer? We, the committee's come up with a list, and I know that you also, Brad Hawkins, who I believe will be working a lot with the committee and to do that, but have you got any, have you and Brad discussed any kind of timeframe yet to begin the addressing some of those issues?
We're on the hook, Mayor, right now for that, and Jay, you know, from my conversation with Jay, to get the playground equipment in over, hook out, so that's going to be how the priority goes. I wouldn't anticipate anything happening on that, probably around spring. Now, we can do some things to address like the high curb areas, I think that was one of the things. If that's, you know, we can go in there and do some things to maybe address that, but as far as total demo reconstruction of ramps, particularly on Main Street, one, I wouldn't anticipate anything until spring. Two, I think we need to, and by we, I mean myself and Council even needs to be involved as to how, once, I'll throw it on Jay, once it's designed, I, I really see, you know, there's, there's some things in the way, particularly some light poles, there's some planters, so, you know, what is the Council, because, you know, I had this conversation with Robbie Barber just a couple of weeks ago about the trees, we remember, we need to replace the trees on Main Street, but, but that's on the whole pattern because of, we have to know if we're going to lose planters. And at some of these ramps, I believe you're going to lose some of the things on Main Street in order to accomplish what the AVA Committee wants to accomplish on Main Street.
Okay, now, as I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, there was a priority list that I tasked you guys with, of at least four or five, what was it?
Right.
I would ask that Brad get with Ron and Jerry Henderson?
Yeah.
And let's look at the top three things that we could do during the winter that would be the most effective and the most cost-efficient for the time, and then develop a plan so that at the beginning of the spring, where we want to start looking at doing some of the sidewalk, particularly the ramp issues, we have that in place.
One of the things, I know that one of the things was taken care of with the, with the Sidewalk Assistance Grant there at the courthouse.
At the courthouse, yes, those metals.
Those trucks were taken care of, so, no, there's been work, not necessarily by us, because there has been some work, a little started on.
And I'm going to ask you as well, and Jay, I'm ready to re-discuss the issue with the pedestrian signs on Main Street. It's time that we get the DOH. I've had just about enough of them protracting everything we keep trying to do, and it's just because it's under their purview. It's time to do something for those citizens and the safety of crossing these streets without the lights. I'm going to ask you guys again, and if it takes me going over the DOH or whatever, let's do it, because it's about time we do that. I've let it go, let it go. I now have the money and the budget, those signs are about $4,000, they're $7,000. They have an LED that lights up, will light up half of downtown when somebody needs to cross the street, so there's no excuse that you can't see somebody trying to cross.
It's dangerous.
It really is, and, and this is the time of year that we need to take care of those things as the traffic's low and that as the weather facilitates that kind of activity as opposed to groundbreaking. Jerry, thank you very much, thank you very much for your crew, we appreciate all you do. Mr. Holland, City Engineer.
Try to be brief. It's on the second page of your handout packet, the generator grants, two contracts. Contract number one, the generator is due to leave the plant next week and arrive the week of the 14th, have that installed. The contractor anticipates his portion of the project being wrapped up before the end of the year, leaving the city just to erect the fence around the perimeter of the Tinnerton Booster Station. Spoke with the contract, two contractors today. The equipment arrived yesterday, we're having our pre-construction next Thursday morning, and he's going to require one week to get his project done, so all in all, as I was telling the mayor earlier today, you know, we expect the generator projects for Tinnerton and the raw water intake to be completed before the end of the year. Item number two is the Water Treatment Plan Improvement Project. As it was reported, we opened the bids on November 12th of 2015, we received four bids. Triton Construction from either St. Albans or Crosslanes was the low bidder at $1.3 million. We anticipate issuing them their Notice of Award sometime late January of 2016. We've got to straighten out some financing issues, and I'm sure Michael will talk about that, and then we will issue a notice to proceed sometime late February, start the project soon after. Atlantic Coast Pipeline Movement, I think I reported on this, but I just want to give you an update. I resubmitted the April 23rd letter concerning the Buckano River Crossing, I resubmitted that November 5th. Since then, there's been a little bit of movement from Dominion, they've gotten back with me, opening the lines of discussion regarding the river crossing, and we're to set, set up a meeting to discuss that in further detail, but that's not been done yet, so, you know, anxious to get that project started. Source Water Protection Plan, Tom and I have completed our review of the feasibility study and contingent, contingency plan section of that protection plan, lots of protection plans, and we're going to have TetraTAC, who's our consultant engineer on this particular project, present that information and findings to the Water Board next week and discuss that so we can incorporate it into the final Source Water Protection Plan, which needs to get submitted to the state before June of next year, and we're going to be well in front of that deadline. SCADA Systems, we awarded that contract to CI Thornburg. We opened the bids late October, we issued them their notice to proceed on November 6th. Chapman Technical Group is currently reviewing the submittals and shop drawings, I spoke with them this afternoon. The contractor is going to be, he is anticipating starting on that project late January 2016, it's going to take about a month and a half. He's got to do some work in the water treatment plant, he hopes it warms up enough so that he can hit the water storage tanks and the booster stations at the end of his length, but it looks like we'll have a new SCADA system in place before June. Here's the one that, we received a little bit of bad news, it's not a bad, it's just a formality that we have to go talk about. The Army Corps of Engineer Flood Control Project, we received a letter from the DNR November 17th, and it's going to require two additional surveys be done before any cleanup of the river is conducted. We must do a freshwater mussel survey. That survey can only be done between May 1st and October 1st of each year, going to take approximately a week, budgetary numbers around $20,000. The second survey is for the Virginia Spirea, it's a plant, it's been located, it's on the federally listed list, it's been located north of the dam on the banks of the Buckano River, so they want to do a survey in our project area. That can only be conducted from June 1st through September 30th, and it's going to take about $15,000. So Michael and I have, you know, this all came to light this week, so Michael and I will need to talk, and it looks like any work on that project may be postponed until 2017, only because of the times of the year, we can't have equipment in the river. We're hoping to get it done earlier, you know, and those are just budgetary numbers, you know, and speaking with a couple different West Virginia licensed surveyors of this particular type of work, you know, when we put it out for competitive bid, maybe we'll get some better prices and we can get them in there earlier and at least do some work this year, I mean, next year, but that's just an update on that. The last two, Public Safety Complex, we had our bid opening November 23rd, there's a typo, we only received three bids, not four. The apparent low bidder is Huffman Corporation from Bridgeport, West Virginia, with a bid of $32,700. We issued his Notice of Award this past Monday, anticipate a pre-construction meeting in the next week or the week prior to Christmas, and he anticipates starting right after Christmas. Why, he doesn't want to wait until the new year, that's not for me to decide, but, and then having the project completed still by August 5th of 2016. Now, that does not, is not a complete project. We had a base bid, which is what they were awarded the contract on, then we had an additive alternate, and that was to finish up the carpeting, the painting and stuff like that. I don't believe we had the numbers in the budget, we're going to talk to Jerry, oh, Jerry left. So he gave me an assignment, I'm going to give him one, and we will coordinate that, but we're, we're very close. What this does is get them, the, the room itself up to a finished drywall state. The drywall will be taped, mudded, sanded, ready for priming, painting and all that, and then the only thing less, needs to be done is installing some baseboard cabinetry, some wood baseboard trim and the carpet itself. So, I mean, it's going to get us close, but, but that's where we are. And then just last, this is a resubmission of the Gateway West Project, required a resubmission prior to the beginning of 2016, I completed that yesterday. The project cost went up about $30,000 to $395,351, and that's to, just like Gateway East, for the people that are not familiar with, if we want to try to do the same thing on Gateway West, but this is only going to be on the north side, which is the side that has kids or kids, Dr. Reed's old office, Clyde Law Office, that's the north side, the hospital side is the south side. Don't have the money in the budget, in the grant budget for the south side this year, so if we can get Phase 1, which is the north side completed, then at all likelihood, they'll give us money, because they want to see the project completed also the following years, you know, we do the south side. That's all I have, if there are no questions.
How many questions?
I have a question about the Gateway West.
Yeah.
Project. I seem to recollect that all the way out through there, at one time, there were sidewalks on the west side.
That would be the north side, yes.
The north side, the north side, yeah. Seems like they may have either been covered over or the highway was, pavement was built up, but I believe there are sidewalks there that might provide a base or something for others.
I think they were removed, if the water line was replaced out there, you know, and I want to get with Kelly on that. I, I think that the sidewalks were removed to allow for the installation of the water line, you know, some time ago, and they usually never put back. Can't confirm that, you know, but we can, we can look into it.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
The, the, on the, the DNR.
Yes.
You're saying the four and a half miles of the cleanup, that those two species have to be surveyed, exactly?
We have to have the riverbank survey, a river, not the riverbank, that does the muscles move, we have to have the riverbank survey for the Virginia Spirea, which is the plant, white, small white petals, about a half inch in diameter, you know, nice big full bloom. That can only be done from, shoot, June to September, and, you know, that's got to come back positive, i.e. none was found, none of them were found, that would be a positive, and that's a good thing. And then they'd have to do, so that's nine miles of riverbank. And then on the riverbed, it's the four and a half miles for the freshwater mussels. Unfortunately, in speaking with the biologists, they like together or they accumulate where there is not a normal flow of river water, i.e. where the trees and the stumps are. So that's where we were planning to do a majority of the work, that's where, if they're to be found, they'll be congregated around, where the dead trees and the tree stump.
So if surveys come back where you have the freshwater mussels in that plant, that means we can't clean up that portion of the.
Then we will have to relocate them, you know, and that's additional findings. You don't know what that is, but hopefully don't know what we're going to find. If there's moss, mussels were found, freshwater mussels were found, then they have to be relocated to an area outside the construction work area.
You got to relocate?
Have to be relocated.
The plants and the mussels?
Yeah.
Can we relocate the mussels to a freezer somewhere?
Um, Jay.
Let's relocate the DNR.
Jay, and I appreciate, I understand this, and they keep coming up with this new stuff, but now that you've mentioned that, is there any other Council questions today? Because I do know Dr. Downer, I'm pretty. Because I do know Dr. Downer, I'm pretty sure, is wanting to talk about this subject. This is what you were waiting for. Let me make sure council doesn't have any other questions. Do you have one or comments?
Yeah, I'm just flabbergasted with the, you know, we keep talking about this, talking about this, and it needs, you know, for, and, you know, if we don't eventually do the cleaning of the riverbanks and whatnot, you know, what if we have a flood? What's going to happen?
Where do you relocate them? That's my question.
I don't know. In that area downstream of the work site, which is, you know, downstream.
Okay, we get all that. Dr. Downer, did you have any questions or comments? Do you understand what we're talking about? Because I know you came to us before talking about the possibility of flooding and a lot of the dangers.
Well, I was here on September the 17th, and I think I talked to you the 21st of September, Jay. I appreciate the call. But my concern is as much now, if not more, in Island Avenue, which is now Route 151, that goes by our house, from our house to this city building, there's at least five large trees. One of them came from the, where the railroad track is on this side, completely across the river, and that debris is not doing any less than was when I stayed and talked to you here at September the 17th. I said that the debris and all the things that comes from upstream is catching on those trees even more as I speak, since I spoke in. Now, is this just an ecology problem? Is that it, Jay? Is that the problem that's holding us back from clearing those out? All we take a piece of equipment, when it waters down, lock a rope or chain, pull it to the side, cut it up and get it out of there. That's all there's to it.
Jerry and Lowell actually accomplished that a little bit just past the bridge here this past spring. Pam has brought that up numerous times, and I know Jerry, and I'm assuming now Brad have a game plan, as I told you, but unfortunately, you know, that wasn't part of the flood control project, you know, so Jerry's kind of handling the bypass issues with the falling trees. And so, I wish you really wouldn't have left, because I, you know, when I saw you, I thought, well, Jerry needs to maybe be here to answer some of those questions. But, I mean, I know that it's been discussed many times with councilwoman, councilwoman Perry here, and that they've talked about it, and I know they act Michael Wright. They have cleaned up some of the trees and debris earlier this spring. Now, it was over here, not where you see it every day. And again, I don't know Jerry's plan. I don't know what his scope, what his workload is, what his schedule is, but I know that there, it is on his radar.
So, at earliest, we're talking about next year, is that right? Possibly.
Possibly.
Could be.
You know, he's, knowing his plate is full.
Okay.
We plan on the flood control project. I don't want to get the two intertwined. The flood control project, we plan on bidding out because we just don't have the manpower and the equipment to do that. And that's what this year's money, Michael's put, and I don't know the exact amount, but we had set aside some money to, you know, to start that project, because as I've told you, it's going to be an ongoing perpetual project. Soon as we get to the other end, we'll come back and probably do it again. Hopefully not, but I anticipate that. But we may have to use this year's kitty to pay for these two surveys that are going to be required, and then Michael will, you know, reestablish that fund, and then maybe later 2016, once the new budget is approved, or early 2017, we start on the flood control project. Now, how that ties into Jerry's work, I don't know, you know. Do we consider making it an additive and, you know, maybe doing some of that work? Because I don't anticipate there's going to be enough money to do the whole entire project all at once, and, you know, once we get an idea from the contractors of what it's going to cost per tree or per structure to remove out, that would give us a better idea of how much money is going to be required on the bypass. But until any of that comes to fruition, I just don't know what it's going to take or how long or how much.
But the bypass that Dr. Downer's talking about could also be subcontracted out. Was that correct?
Yes, absolutely it could.
Could I ask you this? Does the city have any equipment that a chain or rope could detach those trees and do here locally?
We have a small bulldozer in the backhoe, and I know with the size of those trees, that's not going to do us any good.
They try to move some of those trees.
They were waterlogged is what they were.
But I think there will be, I think, Jay, I guess I would suggest that you and Jerry get together and talk about what it would cost for a subcontractor to do the bypass work, because it's not going to get any better, and it's got to be done at some point in time anyway. And we hear enough in the paper, in the Channel 3, that we've got this great surplus, and maybe we need to use some of that money to do something that we, that you would consider as an engineer, a high priority.
I would. Yes, I would, because it, you know, as I, as the floodplain manager, it gets that water through Buchanan and out as quickly as possible, but, you know, it's a delicate balance.
I think you should bring back an estimate of what it would be to subcontract.
Well, that's what we're asking contractors for, until we can get on the river and determine just exactly how much, how many trees, how many tree stumps need to be removed, both from the river and the bank, because all the work, you know, that's in the river has to have a cable or change attached to it, pulled to the side, and then the work done there. There can be no equipment in the river, you know, they're not letting any of that happen. So, until we get a ballpark figure, and Jerry and I went out, sorry, not Jerry, Bradley and I went out with three contractors this summer, you know, showed them an approximately half a mile, three quarter mile section of that river, and, you know, they said it's absolutely doable, but until we finalize the scope, you know, are we going to do it per tree? It's going to be lump sum, you know, 1,000 feet a year, you know, 10,000 feet a year until we determine that, but, you know, I just don't think the money that we originally started talking about, as I've said before, is going to be enough. I think it's a $750,000 project, and that's just the flood control project. You know, that's not the bypass.
Just one more comment. There are going to be more trees in this five. There's more ready to go. So, the longer you wait, the more work to be done.
Thank you, Dr. Downer, for bringing that to our attention again, and you're absolutely right, and I'll add a couple of things. As far as the bypass, that's the easy part, because it's actually somewhat level and getting in is shallow water. Well, we're talking about this other part where you've had a, maybe a what? What's the degree? Probably about a 45?
41. It was reconstructed.
A degree for anybody to get in there, even the equipment to try to get in and pull anything out of the deeper end above the dam, or even a little path to dam, is hugely dangerous for anyone in particular, and that's why we are going to have to subcontract out, and it looks like we're going to have to subcontract out this as well. This is a concern that the city's had for quite a long time, and obviously FEMA has had for a couple of decades. We're working on it as fast as we can, but at this point, we can't just send people out there. In fact, we would urge you not to go out along the bank, along the river to start cleaning up or anything, unless you want to take your own life into your hands. In fact, what was it, two years ago, we had a gentleman fishing on the side of the bank itself and drowned on the side, and nobody even knew it and knew it was there fishing. It's very dangerous to be out out there on the river trying to clean up. The city will, as it can, try to address the issues that you're talking about, and I would encourage to Jay and Jerry to work with Dr. Downer, since he does have the historical perspective, omphraths, backups along the river, that you be included in that discussion because I know how concerned you are with it.
I myself, with the arid conditions, if you ever talked to those people down there that had that flood in their home in 85, people, well, I appreciate that.
I do think if, as we talk about sewer, not sewer, a stormwater issue at one point, we're going to be looking at a storm department, a stormwater department. I think that constructurally, engineering-wise, there may be able to, a way to, once we can determine engineering-wise, a way to deflect some of that water off with the stormwater, I think you're going to see that that will also help increase or decrease the flow in the river that is a concern for you. Ultimately, that is a huge deal for Buchanan, not only just because of the area you're talking about, but all the other areas in town where the stormwater backs up and there's not enough, and we have combined sewer overflows, which ends up in our sewer system, which we get fined for at the end down at the, at the Senate Chamber Plant. That pretty much wraps up that. So, having said that, I appreciate your concern. Jay, is there any other questions?
I just want to add to it. I believe I mentioned it to Dr. Downer, that there are certain parcels of property over there where the people on the north side of Island Avenue or the Old Elkins Road actually own part between the road and the river. Is that their responsibility? Is that their trees that are falling? You know, those issues have to be looked at because it's not owned by the state, it's not owned by the city. The property actually goes all the way to the river and was bisected by the, the Old Elkins Road. So, I mean, you know, those issues have got to come into play. It's a responsibility of the property owner, if it can be determined. That I don't know, you know, so, you know, not trying to pass the buck, but those are all things that we have to look at before we can move forward with, with that.
All right. Thank you, Jay. We appreciate it. Thank you for all your work, as always. Scott, we're, Mr. Go P L L C, City Attorney. Sir, you're up.
Same. Ask Scott the first City Attorney. Got three items we prepared of the direction of the mayor and council from a prior meeting. The first item is a draft ordinance for the future council compensation. I think everybody's got a copy of the draft. Under the instructions given to me, we are merely increasing the amount from $200 per council meeting. And again, as I understand, this has no impact on the board meetings and the compensation for that, but changing that amount from $200 a meeting to $300 a meeting, that was last changed in April 2004, so that's been, obviously, better than 11, 11 years ago, 11 and a half years ago. So, obviously, that's subject to change if anybody wants it, but it's in draft form now, and I believe that was the direction of this body to take that from 200, 300 for the council meeting only, and obviously no impact on any board meetings, I understand. Any questions or any discussion on that for me?
I'll make a few comments. I, I threw out the $300 number, not as a firm recommendation. I want to make it very clear that the city council cannot give themselves a raise, period.
That's correct.
We cannot do that. It's for the next cycle.
That's correct.
And, you know, we, the county commissioners, they are, the state tells them what they're going to make. They have no control of that. Am I correct on that, Scott?
I'm not. That's pretty good.
I'm pretty familiar. They cannot, they cannot do anything. They are given the increase or decrease by the state. The state has told us by statute that we cannot give ourselves an increase, that we can do it for the next election cycle. I think it's time for us to do that. I don't know what the appropriate figure is for the elected officials, the council, the mayor or the recorder, but I personally would like to do some of my own research. I mean, I call up other municipal treasurers or financial people and ask them, not every municipality handles a compensation for their city council the same way. You know, we separated between council and the board and so forth. I also like to know what are other cities anticipating for the, for their next election cycle? If we do not do anything now, that means it'll be 16 years before the, these next positions that are up for election will get any consideration for an increase. I don't know what the increase should be. I don't think we should be the highest paid city in the state. I don't think we should be the lowest paid city. But my, my major concern was, don't wait for X amount of years, a long time, before you consider a compensation increase for your elected officials. But also, if you're going to do it, make the announcement before the election cycle deadline application is. Because I said, the first time I ran in 2004, after I, I didn't run to make money. I ran to do, I thought, help the city and so forth, and I wanted to do some things. There was a 400% increase, I believe, that cycle, and it was done after everybody submitted their, their applications for candidacy. So, it's something we don't have to do tonight. I don't know what the figure ought to be. You know, maybe it should be $200 more than, instead of $100, and I'm not sure what the, the mayor should be or the recorder. I think this should be more than what they're making now. I feel very strongly about that, and, you know, I'm willing to debate anybody anytime they want to discuss it, but we can't, we are not going to be impacted by this. None of us sitting here today, either the council or the recorder or the mayor, will receive that increase. If we all decide to run again and get elected, yeah, then it's going to affect us. And, you know, maybe we do it, some people say, well, they don't deserve, we'll throw them all out, which is fine, too. That's the way elections are. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any, let me, Scott, unless anybody has really important say on the compensation issue, we can say it now or wait until you finish your report?
I can finish.
Wait until you finish the report? All right. Go ahead, please, continue, Mr..
Okay. Just one small issue on this. This ordinance only addresses the city council position and does not discuss the mayor or the recorder position, so if that direction's given, then we'll certainly talk about that. One point I would make, we did, Amy and I, and I think Teresa helped, we gathered some information on some local towns and cities as, as to what their salary was. I don't know how comprehensive that was. We made some phone calls, and probably Amy could elaborate more than that. Also, if you recall, Mayor, I got the study done by the Municipal League, but it's so old, it's to probably be of very little value. I believe it was 2008. Maybe just to get your head around, sometimes they don't change in that amount of time, but that's been seven years ago, so it's probably got very little value as to what people are making now. So, again, we'll, we'll do more studies or get more information as we need to, but this only relates to city council. The second issue is a draft ordinance approving the Prevention Resource Officer for the academy, and then the agreement, which are both part of the attachments given to you. It's only in draft form. The agreement is a form agreement that's found on the, I think, Department of Justice website, I believe. Everybody enacts this agreement. The only complex part is ascertaining what the salary of the employee is and how it'll be divided. That's under 2.2 of payments. Says the monthly payment shall be based on a rate of blank dollars per hour and shall be made within blank days of receipt of the invoice. So, that's yet to be determined. It's a pretty simple math, but that's the agreement between the Uptown County Board of Education and the City of Buchanan. And then a pretty simple ordinance adopting, authorizing the mayor to enter into that agreement. I forwarded it to Chief Gregory, and he didn't have any much issue with it. He was concerned about calling ourselves the grantee, like it says in the form ordinance. We're not getting a grant here. It's going to be paid by levy money, I guess, so we could just change that and say the board and say the city, and that would accomplish the same effect, and I can go back and change that and take out grantee and put City of Buchanan and then say just the city. So, that's before you, and that was per council's instructions. I don't know if there's any questions on that particular issue.
Any questions on that particular issue? No. All right.
Pretty cut and dry, pretty simple. Then the last item is the proposed or potential increase to the police protection fee, and as I understand the instructions, for discussion purposes amongst council is to change the household number from $1.50 a month to $3. Let me see where that's at exactly.
Yes.
It's there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then one thing we did here, what's, what's now Ordance 224, when we pass our codification, and I'm going to try to stick with Thunder Mayor, I know this is your baby, but will actually be Article 737 in the new codified ordinance once that comes to fruition. So, what we said in here is we're amending Ordinance 224, which will prospectively be Article 737 of the codified ordinance of the City of Buchanan, so this will be a part of that. But as it's proposed in draft form, and I didn't lay the whole thing out, that's unnecessary, we just laid out the part that we're discussing, and currently, and that doesn't mean we're limited to discussing that, that's the residential fee for each houses. It does not address commercial, as you know, so it's changing that number from $1.50 to $3, and again, merely a draft here. It's at liberty to be changed by legislative prerogative, and I'll send us what we'll do at some juncture. So, those are the three items before you. We'll take them. I'll do whatever we're instructed here, is how we proceed here, and I will draft whatever needs to be drafted.
Two questions for you.
Yes, sir.
First one being, and I know you deal with a lot of different cities as well, municipalities, we're sitting on, we currently have a tier structure for the commercial part of, in our fire, in our police fee. Michael, is that correct? It's a tier structure, kind of like the fire department fee was?
There's several parts of the tier, yes.
I'm going to ask you, Scott, what is it normally anymore that's standardized within municipalities? Is it based upon, at the commercial level, is it based upon the amount of employees or is it, or do you see a whole lot of, as others, a tier structure? Because that seems to be, from what I, the research.
It's not anything like this. I actually drafted the first one in the state in 2002 for Huntington, and it's based I actually drafted the first one in the state in 2002 for Huntington, and it's based on employment within the corporate limits. The City of Huntington's user fees, it's called, and was subsequently adopted by Charleston and other places. I believe every one of those, not Huntington and Charleston, is based on employment within the corporate limits. Huntington's went hog wild, theirs is $5 a week now, so it's $260 annually, so it's far and away the highest. I think Charleston might be at two and has plans to cap out in 2020 at maybe $3. Most everybody still want it at two, but all those are based on employment within the corporate limits of the town. Your office is a little unusual in that it's based on residence and then a commercial rate based on gross sales.
What is it based on? That's a good question. Sales?
Gross sales.
Gross sales.
So, that's unusual. I've never seen anything like that, but the, the user fee that we put together, that was put together in '02, it's a format that's been pre-while copied. You're trying to, in Act 1313, you're trying to identify the users and the consumers of the service.
Yes.
And so, and this has been upheld. This is Thornton Cooper versus the City of Charleston. It's a Supreme Court case from about four years ago, upholding Charleston's user fee, and that's based on employment within the corporate limits of the city. They said that is a rational and reasonable basis to determine who is the user and the consumer of the police service. That don't mean this is wrong. No, that just means that that particular method of reasonably identifying the user has been upheld by our Supreme Court.
That's the commercial side. That's the commercial side, not the residential. And my other question is, is again, this is...
It's the only side. It's whoever's employed. It's not based on homeownership or property values.
Okay.
It's just based on employment. Whoever's employed, the employer is required to deduct that minimum checks and remit to the municipal government.
The last police fee increase was when, Michael? In 1984?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two? So, eighty-two, again, we're talking about no increases in the fees to the citizens since 1982.
Well, actually, the fee went down. It was actually $2 in ordinance 221, and then they reduced the fire and the police by ordinance 223 and 224. Does that sound right, Ambie? Yeah, I think they were reduced from $2 to $1.50, at least the police fee was. And two, ordinance 221 was enacted in 81 or 82, and it was $2 per house. For the property owner portion, the residential portion, it was $2, and then it was reduced in 83 to $1.50.
Gotcha. And what I'm trying to get at here, and I'm not trying to cook you off, because I understand all that, and I know citizens who lived here, there's quite a few that were around. I'm sorry, Robbie, you probably went around in 84 to know that, but I see some. My question would be then, Michael, and I'm correct, that 8%, the only, 8% out of their total budget is what the fee now covers, correct?
Their current, their current.
Of 900 and some odd thousand-dollar budget. The rest of it comes out of what?
Just the...
The general fund, correct? That general fund is our ad valorem, our BNO, and any other taxes that are collected as a whole, correct?
Yes.
All right. So, having said that, we just increased the fire, on the fire department fee by the buck fifty, and that brought us back up to 22% of the fee actually covering the, of the, out of the general fund, or covering their budget. I think it's time, council, that we take, and here's my objective, and I told you this when I, when he gave the five-year plan. I've asked Michael, I tasked him on that five-year plan to look at, trying to eliminate 25% off the general fund, so that can go back to the citizens and projects that need to be done within the city, not unlike the one we're talking about at the river, not unlike the one we're talking about on ADA, but we've got to increase it. My discussion here, and I would encourage, and, and I disagree with the buck fifty, I would say 50 cents would be a reasonable increase, because that would cover, and the police fee, what we would have on a additional, with the PRO officer and the replacement of that PRO officer within the, within the department. One last thing I would like to bring up, since we've had that discussion before, the math is wrong as far as the amount of months the PRO officer is actually in academy, okay? And I'm going to give you an example. How many, what is the minimum amount of days that the state has to have students in school? 180 something, 184, 185?
180.
180 even? And, I think last year they hit that, but previous two years and before, then you didn't even get to the 180 days, correct? So, those students are in there. That's when our PRO officer is in there. Now, if my math is right, at 180, that's only six months out of 365 days. Am I correct on that? Am I missing something? So, I'm not seeing the nine months. So, really, we're looking at hiring a half an officer, because the other half, Officer Stewart will be back in the department doing his job, correct? So, I think that 50 cents should be enough to cover what the, what the equipment that he needs to have in the officer end, of course, don't forget the pension, don't forget the retirement and all that. 180 is 360. We have 365 days in a year. Am I not right? I'm not even an accountant. I don't know that number.
Well, I want to make a few comments when you're finished.
Well, good. So, having said that, that's what I'm looking at on the police fee now. Is there anything in particular the council wants to talk about on all three of those? We already talked about the increased compensation. Does anybody want to add on to what Dave commented on there?
Well, I want to make some more comments.
In a moment, in a moment. Let me get council to do their part, and then we'll open up to the, to the public. Yes, Dave, what is it, sir?
I, I think we, I think we have to be very, very careful in looking at the prevention resource officer and the increase in the police fee. We do not want to get those two things tied together. They're totally separate. The prevention resource officer is going to be paid for by the county. We're contracting, they're contracting with us, okay? Now, we talked about, we need to, if Mr. Stewart, Officer Stewart, goes to the elementary school, then we have a void, which we have to determine what is the amount of time, okay? And we don't need to have an increase in the police fee to take care of that void, period. I mean, that doesn't work out, quite frankly. We also need to take a serious look at some point in time, Matt needs a look at this, and Doug, is that we do have the home rule, which gives us the capability at some point in time to hire part-time officers. We're not doing that currently, but, but the council basically said, if Mr. Stewart goes to the elementary school, then we need to take a look at filling that void when he goes there. The police fee increase is not a part of that process. I, I think we need a police fee increase at some point in time, because the monies that we will receive on the police fee and fees will provide relief for the general fund to do infrastructure projects in the future. I, I have suggested for a long time, we need to take a serious, comprehensive look, which Michael did with his five-year plan, to make some suggestions. There's more things we can do other than simply what he had suggested. I agree with a lot of what he suggested, some I do not agree with. There's other alternatives to look at, but we've got to have a way to do this in a comprehensive, sit-down-and-talk kind of workshop, to look at what are all the different fees we have. And as I indicated at Keith Buchanan at the town hall meeting, his, one of his very first, two comments he made, one, how are you going to spend the money if you get more money coming in? What are you going to do? And the citizens are willing oftentimes to say, hey, I'll pony up, because we're going to do some really great things to improve and enhance the quality of life. That is very, very important. The other thing I've suggested, and Keith suggested, actually suggested in the meeting, is we do not want to put an overburden on our businesses and town. You know, the citizens should be willing to pay, hopefully, more police fee, or user fee, or what are you going to call it, Scott, which I think is an interesting concept to, you know, it's been out there for use, user fees. But, you know, maybe we, I think CJ Reynolds made a comment in the town hall meeting, is that there's a couple cities that give way in excess of a million-dollar exemption. I think we need to look at all that stuff together, not cherry-picking or piecemealing. So, that's, that's my comment. I, I think, you know, we need to discuss these things comprehensively, not just one, one shot at a time.
David, I have to disagree with you.
That's fine. I don't care if you disagree.
And we had a discussion, we talked comprehensive. I even tried to give you a committee to look at what you're talking about comprehensive.
And what, and what happened?
You dismissed it.
Now, wait a minute. They increased the fire fee the next meeting.
Yes, we did.
And my suggestion is, let's look at all this stuff together, rather than do it cherry-picking. That's, that's where I believe. You disagree, that's fine.
Well, here's the issue, though. We were in a town hall meeting together, you were there, and we asked the, all the citizens that were there whether or not that they felt the PRO or a police fee was going to be an issue. And everyone down, too, and every person I've talked to, citizen, does not have a problem spending another 50 cents to either...
Don't tie them together, though. They're separate.
Well, they are together, Dave. That's the problem. We're trying to replace an officer, all right, for six months, but let's just say nine months to make it easy. There's the other remaining three months that we have to have to pay him, plus an additional officer, correct?
You, you do not have to increase the police fee to have the prevention resource officer. You've got, you've got excess in the budget now to do that.
Yes, now, but then, okay.
That's what I'm saying. You do not have, you do not have to do it.
But that may not be here next year, then that's going to put us in too much trouble.
I understand, I understand that, and that's when you start looking at increasing.
That's why we have to look to the future. You can't just say right now.
We're having a fundamental disagreement on this, and that's fine.
Excellent. Mr. Pugh, sir?
Yes, we talked about increasing the police fees a long time before we ever heard of a pro officer becoming a part of the budget.
That's right.
So, and back at that time, we thought we needed an increase to help better serve the citizens of the city. Had nothing to do with the pro officer, and I think that's where we're getting away from your 50 cents you're talking about. The dollar and a half increase would have covered everything, have to help, help cover the streets out here with, with the police department, and take some excess money off of the general fund. So, in, in that particular point, I have to agree with David, that, that it had nothing to do with the pro officer. I think we can handle the pro officer with, with what we have now, and, and he's going to be working for us anyway in the time, the time that he's not working for the city or for the school systems. I don't think we're going to have that much of a problem. If we have a problem with it in the next two years or whatever, then, then we should certainly discuss it then, but, but why do a piecemeal 50 cents here, 50 cents next year, 50 cents 10 years? That's why we haven't done anything since 1982. And it's, it's kind of ridiculous, so I think the dollar and a half is perfectly reasonable, and the constituents I've talked to out there have not disagreed with that, too.
Mr. Pugh? Robin or Mary?
On one hand, I think we can handle the pro officer without an increase, but however, we need more things for our police department besides what the pro officer is going to put on us. So, I have to say that we probably do need a police increase, increase to, to not only free, free up money in the general fund for, you know, for taking care of what we already have in the city, and to build new things, but to help the police department have the extra money to buy the equipment that they need. Right now, they, they only have one piece of equipment that lets them see the night They need more than one. They have more than one police cruiser. They have to go back to the, to the headquarters and get it every time they want to use it. We need one for every cruiser. I think we need an increase, as much as I hate to say that.
And I think what you're referring to is called thermal imaging.
That's right.
It's not imaging like the military uses. It's called thermal imaging.
That's what it is.
All right. Mary, do you have anything to add to this?
I just want to say that we started off on this path, talking about PRO officer in the need for, and that was justified. The superintendent of school was here. We all agreed it was a great idea.
It is a great idea.
It is. And then we agreed that another, hiring another officer or replacement of that, that the funding is going to be there, correct?
Yes. The funding is there for this year.
For this year, okay. But then we started talking about the, what they call the police fee? Protection, police, protection service fee?
Yes.
And then that's, that's been here as long as I can remember, okay? And it's $1.50, and we're increasing it $1.50 more, which is $3 per month. And that's not for, for businesses, that's all for...
Just for residential.
For residential.
At this point, yes.
Okay. And, and I understood it to be money that would be gathered to take the weight off the general fund, okay? I understood that. Am I right so far, David?
Yeah.
All right. So, why do we want to change gears right now? Because we're heading forward.
Well, we're not, in my, in my opinion, we're not changing gears. I didn't want to tie the two things together. And, and that's the impression that many people have, that to get the prevention resource officer, we have to increase the police fee. That's not the case.
And it's not, it's not the case to get it, but you, you've got to have the extra money in there, so that's why we're increasing it from $1.50 to $3.
Well, that's, that's the point, Mary. We don't have the extra, we don't have to have the extra money, unless we want to say to the citizens, it's good to have more money in the general fund, so that Michael can come back to us and say, I'm going to do four or five streets instead of two or three, because when you, when you, 22% of our budget for the fire department is supported by their fee, period, and only 8% for the police. So, I think we should have a police fee increase, but I don't want to tie the PRO officer to that, to that scenario.
So, you're, so you're still for the police service fee, but you don't want to tie the two together?
No.
And I think it has been a little confusing, and, I mean, I've understood it, but it's been confusing, but I would say let's go forward with it.
I mean, the county has got an excess levy that is going to provide for almost, I think Matt said, Doug said, 85% of the cost for the PRO officer. They, as the mayor pointed out, there's only 180 days there during school. So, there's got to be some kind of, what's the timeframe or the timeline? How much is Mark going to be working for the, or Mr. Stewart, Officer Stewart, working for the elementary school versus the city? I don't know what those figures are exactly, but, but there are some, you know, scenarios that may be different than, if, if you get 10 cost accounts, you're going to get 10 different costs. I guarantee you that.
Yes, you do.
This is the way, and if you get 10 attorneys, you're going to get different opinions with every attorney.
Your conflict, excuse me, Dave.
I will give you the right one, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
Your, your conflict that's come about with the amount that supposedly has to be paid for by, in order to get a pro officer was due, I believe, to the headlines in the Record Delta that stated that the city is having to increase the police fees to pay for the pro officer, which is not the case. And if anybody had read the article itself, would have found so. Same case with the Record Delta putting in the headlines that the city council is voting themselves a pay raise, a pay raise. We are not voting ourselves a pay raise. It was a, it was a ploy, I believe, to sell newspapers, because people like to believe in what they said in the headlines, and don't believe, they don't read the article. On this part, I strictly blame the editor of the Record Delta for what those came up about.
Let's move aside from that, then. Here's what I can do to solve this issue. Let's go ahead, and, and I see you, Robin, I'll do that here in a minute, but here's going to be my suggestion. We have three drafts before us. We are very familiar with the pro officer. That's a very simple form. We really didn't have to review much for that. I would ask that, in this case, then, since council is in approval, in a consensus, that the PRO officer is something we need, I would ask then for a motion from the council, entertain a motion to allow Scott to bring a draft ordinance for the PRO officer approval with the, the county and with the Board of Education.
So moved.
Alone, just that alone, period. Second. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next thing I want to move on to then is, I'm going to allow you another, another till the next meeting. We're going to make the ordinance for the police fee increase, a, I'd entertain a motion to bring that back to the next council as a draft. Let you read it. Go through your, go to your...
Your table, essentially.
The one that's going to be 737? And then we can bring that back and discuss that. That separates the two discussions there, so we have two very separate discussions.
Thank you.
And then the last thing is, is anybody really, does anybody want to continue on with the discussion on the increase of city council compensation? Keep in mind, that is not for the mayor or the recorder. Do you want to have that as a first reading or a draft? This is the first time you've really seen it. I would suggest we keep it as a draft until the next meeting and bring it on. I would suggest we keep it as a draft until the next meeting and bring it on. So, we're tabling it essentially again until the next...
So, this is tabled until then, and he'll, we'll bring it back then?
Yes.
I would suggest that we table it until January and that we also, I think we ought to look at the recorder and the mayor. And I'll volunteer to do some, or several people can help me if they want to, to call other municipalities and see what their current structure is for the elected officials and see what they anticipate for the future. I think it's not just the, what's right this minute, but what's the next one or two election cycles that those municipalities are considering. And, you know, maybe we'll come back and say, "Okay, we shouldn't get anything more than what is in this cycle."
I agree.
Wait for another couple of cycles.
Okay.
But I think it's worth, you know, 16 years to me, if we don't do anything this time, is an awful long time, and we ought to consider that.
Well, I think some cities had already been called and verified. Isn't that what you said, Scott? That verification?
But they have, they have to ask the analytical questions about, there's a difference, I mean, if somebody says what the city council makes in Buchanan, you may get different answers. It's $200 a month for the elective positions.
Exactly.
Plus an extra $200 a month for the board position. So, that may say $400, but in reality, it's $200, and then we get appointed to one board. I don't like the structured period, the way it's done.
I know.
I think it would be just say, if you're on city council, you get X amount of dollars, and part of your responsibility is to serve on one, two, or three board positions.
Well, Mayor, may I ask?
Well, let me add something there real quick before I forget, because when we talk about comparing and contrasting what other councils or mayors or whoever makes, we've got to keep in mind that we've got to stay within the same realm of those, those particular positions. For instance, it was in the paper that Elkins makes so-and-so, and it's less than what the Buchanan mayor.
It's more.
It's more than, actually, whatever. But here's the problem with it, Dave, I'm talking, here's the problem with it. That is a two-year mayor. We also have to take a look at the difference between what is a mayor council form, strong mayor form, and manager mayor form.
Identical consideration.
Because what'd you want? And here's, here's my argument with it. As the mayor's sitting here, if we ever change it to mayor, or to manager mayor form, now you're paying the mayor for something that he really doesn't, that just gets elected within this group, period.
That's probably, that's part of the problem.
And so, it doesn't make sense to me, and that's the only issue I have with that. But we've got to compare it apples to apples, oranges to oranges, as opposed to just taking whatever willy-nilly mayor does with somewhere else.
Exactly. And every mayor will view their responsibilities differently than another mayor, also.
Absolutely. That's the other issue. Will you get somebody who will actually deserve? That's why I want to keep it out. Will it deserve that pay? Because historically speaking, I don't think so. Having said that, I would like to, yes, Mary, you have one more thing?
I just want to say that I think the, I'm all for, because it's been, what, how many years since this council has been?
Fifteen, sixteen.
Sixty?
Eleven and a half.
Eleven and a half years.
Eleven and a half years?
But we'll be able to do it again for another two years.
But you want, right, so that's a long time. And I also want to say that as a city council member who is active in several other boards and volunteers for other things to help with council, I put in a lot of hours of my personal time, okay, to do research, to study, to converse with another council member, and to get ideas, to share things with the people in the community, and find out information. And it's not all just coming and sitting down here at this table. There's a lot of work to be done. And I never worked so hard in all my life for measly 200 bucks.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate that. Rob, do you have a question or a comment?
I just have one good comment, period, on something. When you're looking at the PRO officer, it's not fair to say he works 180 days for the school, 180 days for the city. Because if you do that, you're implying that he's going to work the five days at the school and the weekend with the city. He's not going to do that. So, you need to look at it in terms of weeks. The school week, the school is about 36 weeks long, and then the other 16 weeks, he would be with the city. But to say 180 days for the school, you're implying that he's going to work the weekends with the city, and it's not fair to just look, okay, halftime here, halftime there, because he's not going to be working the weekends in between.
You're almost absolutely right about that.
School goes a nine-month year.
Because there is some overtime that's involved in most of our police officers, and he is available at any time there is an emergency situation. For instance, if there's a vacation with another officer or whatever, he is available to be called in. So, you can't say that that is the case. In a lot of cases, during the grants, the DUI grants and all of that, he gets overtime. So, he's only getting based on the 40 hours or whatever it is that the agreement is with the Board of Education. But let's just say he goes and does overtime on the weekends, then the city does pay that, and that's at the double rate, so.
And we have to remember that we don't want to micromanage the chief of police.
Oh, no, we don't.
You know, he, Matt's the one that's got the responsibility to make this thing work with the pro officer, working with the county. And, you know, there may be a learning curve there in regard to how much time the pro officer has to dedicate to the county responsibilities or to the elementary school responsibilities. It's a learning curve, I think. So, you know, you have to take a look at it. The first year is going to be very interesting.
It will.
I think 85% of the salary is going to be 85% of the salary. That's what's been said.
Yeah, I think that's almost beyond debate. That will probably include compensation for staying...
It's total compensation.
Total compensation.
I think that's going to take into effect vacation days and whatever else is recognized. They're going to pay those, I believe, as far as that is concerned.
That's what I remember.
Well, Matt said that when you look at the officer that's in question, that's, not in question, that's wrong, but the total compensation is a little excess of $54,000. And that bringing in a new person to get that void is going to be much, much less than that. So, I mean, I think he used a total of $45,000 or something.
All right. I think, I think we've exhausted this. I think we've given Mr. McClure his...
March orders.
Orders as far as the pro officer. That'll come back for a first reading. As far as the other two, will come back as a draft. Do you want to maintain the $1.50 as the draft for the increase on the police fee? Or do you want to change that at this point? Maintain it?
Want to maintain it.
Maintain it, maintain it, bring it back, and then we can talk about changing that as well later. All right. So, any other questions for Scott regarding any of the issues he just brought up?
One to ask is, what education are they going to add to any more paying for the parole officer that will be taking care of the academy school in desire?
My understanding is the Board of Education is going to pay approximately 85% of the individual salary for that service as the resource officer. So, basically, during the school terms, they've pointed from September, from Labor Day to June, they will be basically paying his salary, and then he will be back on the city dog the other three months. I don't mean doldngagly. The city will be paying for those, pretty much roughly, and Chief Gregory could explain it much better than any of us could possibly explain it.
All right. Scott, one last question from Ms. Simons, please.
Sure.
It's not really a question. It's just that the pro officer isn't going to contest anything more than what we're already paying. But even if he did, it's totally worth it.
That's exactly what I, I agree with that. All right. Thanks very much. Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that discussion and dialogue.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you very much.
Under correspondence, we have none. In the packets, folks, you'll see under consent agenda, approval of the minutes for the November 19th regular council meeting, approval of the building and wiring permits, approval of the payment of the bills, acceptance of the municipal court judge resignation, and approval of appointment planning commission Pamela Martin and Jack Reeger. Is there any of the items under the consent agenda you would like to have pulled out for discussion?
Is it Jack or Jake Reeger?
Jack.
Jack.
It's Jack Reeger, yeah.
Okay.
All right. If nobody has anything to pull out, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Submit.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye, motion carries. Under strategic issues for discussion and vote, we have the first reading of ordinance 397, 397, the animal care and control ordinance. Mr. McClure, you have been in charge of that.
Yes, sir.
Is it mature and ready for the council's consideration?
Yes, sir.
All right. And as I recall, no decisions were made at last council as far as recommendations for any of the changes to the current 397. Am I correct on that?
There was one change. That was changing the time of tethering from 15 minutes to one hour. It's the one change I made in the ordinance. I believe that to be the consensus of council members, at least that amount of time, but that number was changed in 300.16, or whatever the section was there. I've talked about this so many times, but from our old ordinance, there's basically four different things that have occurred, and I don't even have my notes. Oh, here it is.
It's on page 13, the top of it.
Okay. The changes from the previously existing ordinance, the one thing we did is make it non-breed specific, so it doesn't no longer relate to what are commonly referred to pit bulls. I think they're technically called Staffordshire terriers, so it's a non-breed specific ordinance. The second kind of important thing we did is, there is no element that allows anybody affiliated with the city to destroy a vicious dog. There's a Supreme Court case that came down in 14 or 15. It specifically says only a state judicial officer, i.e. a magistrate or a circuit court judge, can order the destruction of a vicious animal, and so that is off the table altogether. Another significant aspect is we removed all the administrative action of the mayor and of the animal control authority to deal with the vicious dogs. It's out of his hands, and this makes good sense, and this was recommendation of the commission. It's before an objective arbiter, it's before the municipal court judge to make those determinations and not in the mayor's court. Lord knows, he's got plenty to do. So, that is out, and that's before the municipal court judge. I think there was one other change, but it's escaping me right now. Not breed, oh, and the other one is the tethering issues that we've added in there that weren't necessarily there before, and the humane treatment. This is fairly universal language. Not everybody has this, I don't want, I don't want to say that. Our particular ordinance was a composite of an ordinance from Dunbar, West Virginia, but it's fairly common in other places. So, it has a lot of language about humane treatment for animals. Some of that stuff already existed, but we are really specifically focused on no tethering that was not in our previous ordinance. And if you do tie your dog out for a specified period, must have swivels on the chain, no choker collars, et cetera, et cetera, certain temperatures are all in there. So, it's legislative function. This is your all the ordinance. You do with it as you please. We put a lot of work in, myself and the members of the commission. It is sound, it's legal, it's, I mean, obviously, it's a policy choice, it's a properly crafted ordinance. It does have a lot of specificity to it, it adds a lot of detail to it, and some people like that, some people don't, but that's the ordinance. It is, again, it's a competent, good ordinance, and all of it came from the recommendations of the commission. I'm sure they had a ton of different ordinances before then, and they've seen the full gamut of ordinances out there available to discuss, and this is just one of the types of ordinances that are available. So, I'll take any questions on the ordinance itself.
We'll do it this way. I entertain a motion then to approve upon first reading of the 397 Animal Care and Control. Do I have a motion? No motion? Motion fails. All right. Then what is...
No, it didn't fail, we just didn't have a motion.
There was no motion. Well, it's going to either, that's going to be my question. What is the, what is the, what would the council entertain to do then? Do you want to table it? Do you want to send it back? Are there any suggestions on getting what he has specified in here to come back to us? What is the pleasure of the council?
Can we make some comments?
Can I go first, Dave?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor.
Well...
Go ahead. I'll hush.
I would really like to hear questions first, because we sit here with comments, and I swear, we spent about 45 minutes on comments instead of questions that connect to the objective and help us finish this meeting. Are there any questions regarding, from council at this point, regarding ordinance 397, Animal Care and Control, to Scott?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions then.
Okay.
And, but they're also in the form of comments, too. You can't, you can't separate the two of them sometimes. You know, I have read the state statute, I've read the current ordinance we have, and I've read the new ordinance. I applaud the people that were involved in the drafting of this whole new ordinance. I got a couple of issues with it, and I really didn't go into it into detail until the last 15 days. I did it cursory before. But, you know, and I love animals, you know, I just, I love animals. I think there ought to be a change in one area, which is if a humane officer or the pet control officer, the third offense as far as animal cruelty or abuse, the dog is taken away or impounded, I wouldn't give him three shots. I'd give him one time. If a person is treating an animal abusively or cruelty, they ought to take it away immediately, because that person will do the same thing later on. Why give him two more shots of doing something?
If I may speak, please?
Yeah, sure.
Actually, Dave, what you are saying is exactly what Heather Perkins, who is the West Virginia representative for the Humane Society of the United States, mentioned to me, that in the penalty section, it, I don't know how we, that slipped by me without noticing it, but actually, the person would have two convictions of cruelty to animals and not be, had the dog taken away from them, is what she brought up. That is ridiculous. That should not, we should not have missed that.
So, I would change, I would change that, okay?
I agree.
I would change that. I also have a very strong opinion, and this is my opinion, you know.
That Heather Perkins, she's, my fancy time in the eyes, but she looked it over, and I had already submitted it, and I didn't want to...
Here we go. Let's let Dave finish.
I would, I would change.
That is a real flaw. Thank you for, wow, you must have really...
I mean, I've got massive headaches going through this stuff the last two weeks.
I believe it.
I love it.
Because I didn't catch that, and I've worked on this and I've followed that path.
I also have a strong opinion that once you identify a dangerous and vicious dog, that I think the dog ought to be removed then. You know, you go into a lot of detail about muzzles and a four-year leash and the kind of confinement inside or outside, to go down 12 inches, I mean, just on and on. I think if a dog is identified as dangerous and vicious, that we ought to have a process that that dog should be out of city limits. Why even go into detail?
Because we believe that some dogs can be rehabilitated, and we wanted to take that option, but it doesn't, you know, that's again...
But rehabilitate those someplace else. That's my, that's my opinion. That's my opinion. Okay, so I would take a serious look at that. There's, I don't want to take time as a council.
Here's what I would suggest, Dave, and not to interrupt you, but let me try it this way then. And I know, Mary, you have some concerns as well. Do you have concerns as far as this ordinance goes?
I agree with some of what Dave's saying.
How about you? You got a whole lot of issues with this?
My only issue with this is that I've talked to at least, and I told Maria today, 35 constituents, and not one of them were the favorite of it.
We have a petition here that...
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, before we even go to petitions. Here's what I would suggest. I would entertain a motion to table this under a committee of Mary Alba and Dave Thomas.
I'm going to get more headaches, though.
And Maria Bray, and Robin Keogh. I would involve you, but you're not a city resident, and you're not a non-voting on that commission. We appreciate all your input, but it's an open meeting, and you guys can have that dialogue. I would entertain the, I would...
Will you do that, Maria?
I will do that.
I wish you would. One more time. So, let me do this. Let me table this then. Let's table this discussion and bring it back by the second meeting in January. Is that enough time for you two to...
Yeah.
Would you rather wait till the first of February?
I'd rather do the last meeting in January. Give us some time. Give us some time.
All right. That would be my suggestion.
Can I make one other comment?
Go ahead, please.
And this is, this is to Scott. Scott, when you, when you look at a statute like the state, the state statute regarding this, could, could you, as a legislative body, say that we endorse the state statute with the following exceptions? And have two pages of things that we think are exceptions. Can that be done, or do you have to redo the whole darn thing?
Yeah, I mean, I would think you would have to enact something on the city level. There's a handful of state laws, and we're going to see with the International Property Maintenance Code, that a municipality can adopt by reference. And it's a pretty good reason some of those code books are two and three hundred, four hundred pages. So, you could say we adopt this code by reference. Everywhere else, I know this is pretty voluminous, but hey, look, it started out fourteen pages, but it wasn't skinny when it was first put together. So, it's, it's pretty detailed. But we get back on, that one section you're talking about dealing with dangerous dogs is all of section five, which has all these particular things that a judge has the flexibility. And Judge Levine did mention to me that he thought a judge would enjoy the flexibility of carving a result out for a dog that's declared dangerous. So, we changed that briefly, a little bit of language in there.
And that's, that's subjective. One person's idea about a subject, a dangerous vicious dog may be somebody else's. I mean, there are, there are different levels, tier levels.
Well, there's got to be a finding. There's got to be a complaint. There's got to be a hearing. There's got to be, it's got to be evidence that the dog is dangerous, which would include a bite, which includes something to the effect of menacing or things like that. So, there is some standards. They're not perfect, but there are some standards to guide a municipal court judge to determine that a dog is dangerous.
Okay, Scott. Here's what we're going to do then. Without objection, we'll have a committee of Mary, Maria, and Dave Thomas as committed to come back at the second meeting in January of this council with recommendations for ordinance three ninety-seven, animal care and control. Any objections to that? All right, we're moving on from that. Scott, we appreciate your work, and then Maria and the commission. We will get this done. It's just a matter of ironing out. We're looking some sort of a Middle East peace treaty here.
I appreciate the whole Pet Control Commission doing what they can do.
Absolutely. Moving on, we have first reading of ordinance three ninety-eight, the International Property and Maintenance Code. Council, I hope you had an opportunity to take and learn exactly what that is and why it's important to our...
I did.
Our zoning officer, our building and code enforcement officer. Scott, you have the floor. Is this of mature for reading?
Yes, this is ready to go. This is a pretty simple, straightforward ordinance. This is an ordinance adopting the International Property Maintenance Code. As I just mentioned previously, this is one of the ordinances that you can adopt by reference. I've actually got a couple of copies of which we're going to have to have here on file because we want to have, before we pass it, we got to do a public notice and make available for inspection the actual code. Now, I've got four copies of it, and I've found a lot of these things. This is the only part of the twelve sections of the State Fire Code that can be adopted by itself. You either adopt the whole thing or none of it, with the exception of the International Property Maintenance Code. That takes extra resources. One thing you got to do is contact the State Fire Marshal's Office before you adopt the rest of it, because what they want to understand is how you're going to enforce the plumbing aspects, the electrical aspects, all the other aspects that are involved in that. That's just more time, more resources. So, we started here by adopting the Property Maintenance Code. I've worked quite a bit with Vincent on this. We've been back and forth. So, there are a couple of provisions that you have to fill in, and I just kind of went with what was a consensus about the fines, the first ones being one hundred, five hundred dollars. We hike most places, excuse me, I see, say twelve inches. Some places I've seen ten inches, but we went with twelve inches. Then filled in some seasonal dates related to insect screens. We inserted April first and October thirty-first. And then, if anybody can see, the heat supply, we inserted September fifteenth to May fifteenth. And occupable workspace, we inserted September first and May first. That's subject to, obviously, to modification or amendment. That is the essence of it. Obviously, Mr. Smith here, he might be willing to speak on it further length if he'd like, Vincent.
If you have any questions, I will.
What's the downside of doing this?
What's the downside? It just makes it harder for me to do my job.
Well said, Vince.
Keep in mind, the reason why we do have this is because we had enough citizens over the past five years coming that we don't have any teeth in our ordinance as far as how do we make these homeowners, particularly ones that do not live here, that live out of state or whatever, what do we have in our ordinances to make them actually have to do something? We've given it to them. This is what he needs to make that happen. I think all the citizens would appreciate the fact that maybe we're going to start taking care of properties or make somebody take care of them, so that their own taxes don't go down or their home values don't go down because of the neglect of some neighbors that aren't necessarily caring as much. So, having said that, what I would like to do is entertain a motion, since it is upon maturity, for the first reading of ordinance three ninety-eight, International Property Maintenance Code. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Any discussion on that, Dave?
Yeah, I just have one or two questions. There is a public hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
On this?
Yes. Has to be advertised, just like an ordinance that you're raising revenue. So, we do have to have a one reading at least five days prior to our next hearing, and I've got to get two copies of this up here so it's available for public inspections in the city recorder's office or however you do that. So, yeah, there will be a public hearing on it.
So, we can pass a motion today, and then we have the public hearing, and then we have the final reading of the ordinance at that next meeting.
I think we always, so far, my experience has been we do the public hearing immediately preceding that council meeting.
Right.
So, I can't imagine...
Yes, the hearing, and then we go into...
Then we'll do the second reading.
Right.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to get the title.
It just says you got to advertise it at least five days prior to the hearing going passing.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions regarding that?
No. Great job.
All in favor, say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Thanks very much. Adoption of the five-year financial plan. I do have a speaker here for that, but at this point, folks, what I would really entertain is a motion to table the adoption of the five-year financial plan at this point until we have a work session in January. Michael can schedule that. Let's talk about the first week, second week of January, so we can have a work session to go through the five-year plan. I know you guys got a chance to read through it, but I know there are a lot of questions and concerns that we still may have as far as the financial plan goes. So, I would entertain a motion to table that until after the work session that we have with Michael.
Yeah, I would suggest we bring it up again the first meeting in February, because you want to have a town hall meeting in January.
Okay.
And you don't have to submit the budget, this next budget, until the end of March.
Excellent. I like that idea, so I got a motion to adopt, to take that in adoption until the date that Dave specified. I have a motion, and I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. I do not want to dismiss, though, Mr. Skinner, Mr. Skinner, Mr. Hitten. I know that's what you were here for. We spent two hours going through our stuff.
That's very educational.
I'm sure. We understand it, and we understand why you're here, and we are seriously going to look at it, and we appreciate the open communication that we do have with the Development Authority of the States.
When you just, Mary, we see when we get a date that we're going to do that, we can let them know, and they could come listen, right?
I'm sure they'll be...
Well, Bob may want to say a few things.
I asked him. And he shook his head no, sorry.
Really? Bob, I've never seen you do that before.
It's a long night, Dave. If you'd talk to us...
I'm sorry.
Pam's not down there to pinch him, is that...
No, no doubt. All right. So, Matt, hey, looky there, we're now at your comments and announcements. I have Mrs. Mary Alba. What are your comment and announcement?
First of all, I wanted to say, and I'm going to say this really quick, to the committee that worked on the animal, Maria and Robin and whoever else, where's she, she left. Anyways, I know how it feels to work so hard on something, okay? And to bring it forth for a vote, and it get pulled out from under again, okay? Because I worked, well, actually, along with the mayor, on the city char review way back, okay? Many, 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 many man-hours of volunteering and standing on the street side.
Personnel.
Waiting. Anyhow, I know how it feels, but I wanted you to know that I've talked with the mayor today about, about this, and David and I have talked about it, and we'll be looking forward to working and going over everything with you. We want you to be our, how did we say it?
Experts.
Well, maybe not expert.
What about...
Clarifying, you'll be clarifying things about these, because you've already been through it, okay? We just want to, want to let you know that we do appreciate that, and I do, and I know David does, too. So, thank you.
I was going to, with the next person up, I would ask that we keep, and I didn't get a chance to explain that Mrs. Copari cannot be with us due to family emergency, but I would ask that the citizens of Buchanan keep her and her family and her husband in their prayers as they continue through a tough time. The news was positive today. Let's hope it continues so. Mr. P, you got any comments?
Well, of course I do. I'm sure. I'd just like to remind everybody that Saturday evening at seven o'clock is the benefit concert for the parish house. There's three groups performing. It's a Christmas concert with gospel music and Christmas music geared towards the family. Santa will be making an appearance, and the admitted, the admitted's fee is cans of food or toys for tots. And it's at seven o'clock at the Performing Arts Center at West Virginia Wesleyan College. And you can't get much better issue to make, to help financially than the parish house. They fed seven hundred people for the Thanksgiving people, seven hundred families, and they anticipate that many or more for the Christmas season, so. And the other thing is that I found out this evening that one of my friends died on the twenty-third of last month, and that was Mr. Winston Moore. Many of you knew Winston, that, he graced our city hall here often, almost quarterly with his viewpoints. And Winston was a gentleman. He believed in everything, and I just wanted to express my condolences to his family, because I'm going to miss him on Barber Street, stopping by in his wheelchair and giving me hell all the time. I love the man with every bit of my heart, and I'm honestly going to miss him, and that's...
He was a character.
Thank you very much. That was a very positive thing to say. He actually would stop me with the wheelchair in my car, so tell me things. Mr. Thomas, you got anything, sir?
Just two real quick things. I would ask the, all the citizens of Buchanan and Upshur County, be very careful about telemarketers calling you this time of year. There's a lot of, when they're asking for money, you have to remember, they're getting paid money to do the telemarketing, and the administrative costs can be very high depending on what organization they're asking money for. I won't name any, but they're out there, so please be careful. I think it's really sad that it happens every year like this. And also, I talked too much this evening, so I won't say much, but I got pretty passionate. I usually don't get very passionate in regard to these kind of meetings, but I think the city is a great inflection point for some really wonderful things to enhance the quality of life, and we have to have some very heated discussions sometimes and get different opinions from our citizens. And I appreciate Bob Skinner being here. I've never seen him sit quiet for two hours. But I got some nicknames for him, which I won't use this evening. But I know he, you know, the college is a wonderful asset and resource, and you talk about volunteerism. Bob is now the president of the Development Authority, and, you know, we, I know Michael's five-year plan floated out some ideas there. So, we need to sit around and discuss things logically and rationally and compromise once in a while, and I think this is a great, this is a good evening in a lot of ways, I think, because we discussed some important issues. So, thank you. Have a great weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We appreciate always your insights. Mrs. Simons?
I agree with Dave. They say it takes a village to raise a child.